And get started, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is located on the north wall of the legislative chambers and there is an automatic external defibrillator available on the back wall of the legislative chambers. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, dear God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll begin with the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Tusha.
Here.
Madam Chair.
Here. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, June 3rd, 2014, and Item B, call for a meeting and set Tuesday, June 17th, 2014, as date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rolls or increased value on property.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Madam Chair, the system seems down, so we'll have to do it the old...
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Tusha.
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item C, is there anyone in the chambers wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to resolutions. There are three resolutions. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Tusha.
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Yes, there is one protest. Item G, protest of personal property for Calibretto Building Group, Inc., number 84213 at 2804 South 87th Ave., Omaha, Nebraska, 68124. Good morning.
Good morning, Mike Goodwilly, Douglas County Assessors Office. Upon receipt of the protest, our office contacted the taxpayer. I believe we worked out the dispute that we had and so we advised the taxpayer to contact the clerk's office about whether she was to proceed with the protest because there's no need to do so now. It's my understanding that she did, so the underlying dispute has been resolved and I think this protest could probably be dismissed.
So, does that mean we take no action or do we... Does it come back for a later agenda?
No, it would just go away.
It just goes away.
Just make it go away.
Okay. Easy enough. So, no action needed. Please, roll call.
Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Tusha, Madam Chair. Motion passes.
Yes. Agenda for Douglas County Board of Corrections, roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Tusha, Madam Chair.
Here. Item 1, approval of the minutes of the Board of Corrections meeting held Tuesday, May 20th, 2014. Any questions or comments? Please vote. I mean, roll call.
Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Tusha.
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Citizen comments, is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Corrections about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to the report from our Director of Corrections, Dr. Mark Foxall. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. Yeah, in front of you, my monthly report for May 2014. A call to your attention, enclosure number 1, Administrative Services. We are almost complete with the fiscal year and we continue to remain under budget. The City of Omaha was built through April 2014 and they've paid 90 percent of invoices through December 2014 and they've audited invoices through January 2014 and paid audit invoice balances through November 2013.
Mark, can you move to the microphone just a little bit more?
I'm sorry. Oh, okay. Right. Enclosure number 2, Community Corrections In-House Programs. We have a lot to report this month from Community Corrections and Mike Myers is here if you have any more detailed questions. The 24/7 sobriety program that we've spoken of in the past, added several participants during the month. We are currently standard, I believe that our number is 13 on the program and that number continues to grow. Some initial communication issues between the courts, county attorney, public defender, and DCDC, corrections, that is, were addressed and the program is, we think, functioning fairly smoothly. Our managers, DCDC managers are responsible for the program, met with representatives of the judiciary, public defender, and county attorney offices in May, and we're going to continue our process as it is. The SCRAM bracelets, the alcohol, 24/7 alcohol monitoring bracelets that we've spoken of in the past, those items are here and use of the SCRAM bracelet will be implemented following the training, which is, I believe, June 18th or on or about June 18th, latter part of the, mid to latter part of the month. So, that gives us another option of 24/7 to kind of help that program run a little bit more efficiently. The, we expect a separate, what we're working with now is trying to develop a database to report out 24/7 monthly and all the stats along with, so expect that maybe in my next, in my June or July monthly reports, so we'll have a little bit more descriptive accounting of what's going on with that 24/7 program, but we're still working on that, with the database on that. House arrest staff, admissions, pretrial services, and records, I'd like to just call your attention, they're to be commended with helping to collaborate and ensure the 24/7 got off to a smooth start. It's truly an effort between all those different units to make sure that the program continues to move forward and it has. The Renshaw Initiatives Council is meeting on June 6th, met on June 6th, excuse me, work continues on several RIC priorities, including the development of website, resource guide, and second chance grant opportunities. Speaking of the second chance, speaking of the Second Chance Act grant, speaking of the Second Chance Act grant...
Say that three times.
Yeah. That application was submitted to continue and expand offender employment specialist program operated by Heartland Workforce Solutions. Sarpy County was added to, as a partner to extend services in Sarpy County, to extend services to Sarpy County offenders. They've pledged cash matching funds for this project. If the grant's successful, a second employment specialist position will serve offenders in Douglas County and an additional specialist position will serve Sarpy County as well. Notification of funding typically is announced in September, so it'll be a few months before we hear whether or not we're successful with that grant. And just one more note with respect to Community Corrections, Douglas County was represented by invitation to present the National Second Chance Act Conference in Washington, DC. Mike Myers, Community Corrections Manager, had an opportunity to present workshops pertaining to strategic planning and implementation of evidence-based practices. So, again, we're trying to put out on a national level the things that we're doing here in Douglas County and that speaks well of how we're marching forward in this area. Work release, we, clients donated 1,527 hours of community service last month. We admitted 72 individuals to this program, house arrest individuals contributed 535 hours of community service. We admitted 85 individuals to house arrest last month. Renshaw Assistance Program, the RAP Program, 26 individuals were admitted during the month of May. In-house, or Community Corrections Programs. New GED curriculum is being implemented in the classroom. Students should be able to begin taking official tests in the jail testing center within the next several weeks, so talked a lot about that. That's moving forward. We're pleased with the pace of that and the ultimate goal, so we continue to work forward on that. The equipment stand, we've got the classrooms set up, so just a few more things we have to add before we're fully operational. Pretrial services, 20 individuals were referred for priority prosecution, 273 bed days were saved in May, 1,667 bed days saved year-to-date. During the last month, 282 individuals were placed on the pretrial services program and year-to-date, we've placed 797 individuals on that program and the compliance rate is approximately 98 percent, so that's pretty good with pretrial release program. Compliance, enclosure number 3, auditors from the ICE Office of Detention Oversight conducted their inspection of our facility during the dates 19th through the 23rd of May and we'll be getting a report soon on the outcome of that, of that particular audit. A call to your attention, enclosure number 6, population, we had a total number of admissions of 1,443 individuals coming through last month with a release number of 1,442. Our average daily population is starting to ease up a little bit, 1,063. This morning, we're about, we were at 1,200, 1,205 coming out of the weekend, so our numbers, our numbers are up and down about 11:43 this morning, so we're starting to ease back down, but we, I just let you know over the weekend, our population hit 1,200 and so we're getting into the warmer months of the year, so that's certainly not unexpected. The US Marshall population increased, we're approximately 150 or so. US Marshall holds, the ICE population increased, the felony population, pretrial population increased, as did the misdemeanor pretrial population. Felony, or, excuse me, the female population has also increased during this last reporting period, maybe May of 2014, and a third female housing unit continues to remain open. Medical, we had 1,296 intake screenings, 532 health and physicals, and 232 discharge referrals, so that number looks pretty good, too. Mental health, the initial psych assessments were 40, initial mental health assessments 211, and we had 54 mental health infirmary placements also in the facility. Referrals to community-based mental health services, outpatient psych, 3, mental health and co-occurring disorder treatment programs, 66, mental health therapy, 3, and long-term psych facility, 1. That's what I have for reporting the month of May. Other questions?
Commissioner Tusha.
Oh, I got tons for you. No, I only have a couple today. I'm gonna jump real quick to enclosure number 6. I see that you accepted 45 immigration inmates again for this month. How many did we take in last month? I don't recall.
You know, we had a, we had a group of 70 that came in...
Yeah, that's right.
On a Saturday, then we had another group of, I believe it was 20, and I think we have another group coming in soon.
So, this is not gonna let up at all, or, I mean, in the near future? I mean, I know we have the space...
We have the space and we've watched the space and one of the things that, and they'll call and say, "Do you have any, do you have additional space?" And I can judge by the number of housing units that we have, open or closed, whether or not we have space. For example, this morning, we have one, two, at least three, three open housing units right now, so, and we can handle additional folks, but as the weather gets warmer, we have to ensure that we have open housing units for the local, local intake coming in. And we watch that carefully every morning, we watch the census every morning.
Okay. Are they saying why they're bringing them here instead of other facilities? Because you're doing such a great job?
No.
Which you guys are, don't get me wrong, but...
I think it's, I think there's more activity on the border and I think they're just looking for space elsewhere other than in the southern part of the country.
Okay. All right. Well, and like, I'm glad you're keeping a track on that because, you know, like you said, we've had quite a few coming through lately, so that's a little bit worrisome on my part with the staff that we have, is what I'm talking about.
Yes.
And that brings to my next question. I mean, I know I've talked about those last two times you've been here, about the staff being so short. When was the last time you hired?
We just had, we just, the class we hired just came out of the academy, they've been two weeks on the floor by themselves and we have another, we had a posting out a few months ago and we're getting ready to hire again, probably in the next couple of weeks.
Okay, and what is it, usually about a dozen of them at one time?
Approximately 10 to 15.
So, if, I mean, again, we're still really short on this. I know you didn't have anybody leave recently, but we're still, you know, 12 short. Is there any way that, is there a limit when you do the classes to the 12 or 15, or can you double that to hopefully get some of this build back up?
No. My anticipation for this class that we hire in the coming couple of weeks will be at least 15, if not more. Probably will be more because remember, we are attrition typically, even though we didn't lose anyone last month, it was about two and a half folks a month, so I will probably have a class, for a class to be 15 to 20 in this next academy class that sits.
Okay. And with that, will they automatically just go into correction officers ones?
Yes.
Okay. So, on that note, I mean, you're, you've got six and six on the correction, I mean, 122 and 119, which is, you know, fairly close. Can you, beans you have approximately 12, 15 coming in, can you take any of these lower correctional officers and promote them to the upper ones because you're gonna be filling in the correction one area?
Yes.
Okay. Is that what your intention is or...
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
As long as we have, as long as we have openings at correctional officer 2, we will promote, yes.
Which you do have two of them.
Yes.
And then what about, you know, you've still got another 3, 4, 3 and 4, so can we continually just build the higher ones up to help the lower ones or are you just gonna stop at corrections 2?
No, no, I plan to promote in the next couple of weeks.
Okay. All right. Now, you know what my next question is gonna be. Overtime.
Yes.
Oh, my God. I mean, you know, talk about a spike, I mean, this has been the highest since this graph has been and if you look at vacations, sick, light duty, FMLA, workman's comp, all of that is down and, and if that's all down, if nobody's leaving for vacation or sick or anything, your overtime, I mean, went right through the roof this last time.
We are in the second quarter of, a couple of factors here. Number 1, we are a number of staff down and I think I spoke to some of those issues in providing, getting enough people into the applicant pool so we can fill a class, but also we're in the la, we're in the second quarter, the end of the second quarter of training. Remember, we've blacked out our training during the months of late June and in July and into August, which are our peak vacation months, so there's a lot of training going on. We had a lot of pre-training going on last, during the month of May, which is mandatory training, so you're seeing a lot more training in May than we've typically had. Pre-training, which had to be agency-wide and that's mandated, and also our regular 40-hour in-service training, so that's one of the reasons our training, our, you see a spike in our overtime.
Okay.
Plus, we're down staff and we're taking care of that with the higher next three weeks.
And I understand the down staff, but I thought, and I was under the assumption that the training would happen during off-seasons, not during, you know, like the holiday and summer season.
Well, we've had to finish the second quarter, broke the training out into three, into four quarters and have to get first quarter, we're just finishing second quarter, so in the next couple of weeks, our training will come to an end and we'll be blacked out the rest of the summer and won't pick up again until the fall.
Okay.
So, we've not hit peak vacation season yet.
Yeah, and I understand that. Like I said, I mean, but that's what surprised me because like I said, all your, your other, you know, quotas are way down there and I was just really surprised with the huge, huge spike in the overtime.
Some of that is the pre-training, which had to, which was agency-wide.
Okay.
And that's, that's part of the reason you're seeing those numbers.
With the increases of the immigration inmates, is that also affecting with the overtime or, and if so, do they pay for the overtime also?
They don't, but that, all that's factored into our per diem calculus, that, what we charge ICE to hold their, their inmates, but also it's probably caused us to open up another housing unit, housing unit's approximately five, five people to staff, to staff a housing unit, so that's also contributing a little bit to the overtime as well.
Okay. So, you just hired some more, they're, they're on hand, so...
Yes.
Probably by the next time around, you should at least fill the quota that you're down on, plus you're looking to fill more in, because I know, like you said, you're losing approximately two plus a month, so that should help with this overtime, right? And when you, when you have new staff come on, they don't get your, your more seasoned staff while they're working with them one-on-one and training them, is that part of your overtime too, or is that just regular?
No, that's regular.
Okay.
You're talking about the field training officer program, that's on-duty staff training, the new hires that come on.
Okay. All right. That's all I have today, but I'm really concerned about that overtime, you know, currently. Thank you.
By the time I deliver my next report, we should, I should report to you that we've sat a new academy class and I can project the...
That your staffing should be almost up there and the overtime should be down and...
Staffing should be...
But then we're gonna be during the holiday, then we're gonna be vacation...
No, but remember, those, it takes them a little, few weeks to get through the, through the academy, so that won't impact, that hiring, that class won't impact overtime immediately once they get out of the academy, then they will, that will impact the overtime.
Okay. Thanks, Mark.
Mark, can you walk me through the, or us through the process of when ICE individuals come, are they booked in just like...
Yes.
Our regular, and when they're discharged, they're discharged just like our regular?
Yes.
Okay. There, there's been a question about, I mean, they've been brought in because they're here illegally and so we're holding them and then the question is, or the statement was, is that some of these individuals are being released instead of deported and they've been brought in and they, they've deemed that they're illegal, but they're being, instead of deported, they're being released. So, is there a way to respond to that by saying, "Yes, that's happening, no, it's not happening, here's how many, here's why, here are the reasons"? I don't know how to answer that question that was posed and so if there's a way to run a report or something, could you do that for us?
That is, is more of an ICE question and we've made some inquiries as to whether they know how many ICE arrests they have compared to how many of those individuals are released. I don't, I don't have that number, we don't, we don't track that, we don't know final disposition on the detentions of ICE individuals. I can, in terms of disposition, you know, are they just released into the community or are they deported? I don't know that. Our responsibility is to house them and then the intake, house them, and then when ICE comes and picks them up and we release them and then they're, they're out the door. I don't know what the judicial or administrative dispositions are for ICE, that's an ICE question.
But if they're, if the discharge, I mean, we know where our individuals are discharged or not, they're just discharged?
Just discharged.
So, so you wouldn't even be able to give me a report on non-ICE individuals either?
Well, for example, what I can tell you regarding, we had approximately 1,400 admissions last, last, last month, during the month of May, and that includes everybody coming in the door, marshals, ICE, OPD, new arrests, warrants, things of that nature. And then we probably had approximately as many releases also, but once we get an order from, from court, says this individual is to be released, they pay the bond or their sentence is run, then in terms of where they go, we don't know. We just, we come downstairs, prepare them for release, and then they're released through, from our facility.
So, someone who is there on an ICE, they, and they're discharged, we don't know if they're being discharged to our community or if they're being discharged to go...
We don't track that. I can, what I could do is sit down with ICE and see if we could begin, talk to them and see if they would, would track that information for us, but I, typically ICE would track that information, we wouldn't.
Okay. All right.
But I certainly, I could sit down with the ICE, we have pretty good rapport with, very good rapport with the ICE, local ICE office here and we can sit down and talk to them and, and as I said, I've asked them before and they didn't have that information and we can sit down and talk with them and see if we can develop some type of database and they could track, better track that, the final dispositions of their detentions.
Well, I would hope that they would have that information someplace, that if people are being discharged, discharged, they, they would have to know where...
I would think the, I would think the local ICE office would have that information, but when we inquired, they, they didn't have that information for us.
Okay.
I'll, I'll inquire again, though.
Commissioner Tusha.
Mark, I have one more question. What is the average length of stay of the ICE inmates? Do you have that?
Oh, my gosh, off the top of my head, I do not. The average length of stay across all the demographics is approximately 21 days, but in terms of the ICE detainees, I don't have that information. I can get that for you, though.
Okay. When they're in our facility, are they eligible for the classes that you offer and are, even though they're, you know, they may be deported back again, are they also eligible for the GED process?
Anyone that volunteers for participation in the programs can participate.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Yeah, if you could get that figure for me, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, and I don't know what that level of participation is off the top of my head, but I have no idea.
Okay. Yeah, just add that to Mary Ann's list, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other questions for Dr. Foxall? Thank you. And is there a motion for adjournment? Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Tusha.
Yes.
Madam Chair. Motion passes.
We'll move to the agenda for the, thank you, Mark. Douglas County Board of Commissioners, roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Tusha, Madam Chair.
Here. Item 1A, approval of minutes of Board of Corrections meeting, I mean Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, June 3rd, 2014, and Item B, approval of claims submitted for payment processed through Tuesday, June 10th, 2014, and Item C, the list of exceptions for DOTCOM.
So, move.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Tusha.
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Yes. Consent agenda, items A through K for a total of 11 items. Motion approve. And, is there a second?
Second.
Just to note on I, the corrected, A corrected version was given to Ellen this morning stating the correct, it was supposed to be June 14 through 15 rather than 15 through 16, so you have that correct one, right, Ellen?
Yes.
Okay. Please, roll call.
Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan...
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Tusha.
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Recognition and proclamations, it has been brought to my attention that this item will be held over until next week, June, the June 17th agenda. Citizen comments, is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, there are two public hearings. The first is a Class C 107237 license for beer, wine, and distilled spirits on, an off sale for Deville Hotel, Debel Hotel, Omaha LLC, DBA Residence Inn by Marriott, 18202 coming, Omaha, Nebraska, 68022, manager application for Mitchell Goddard of 3524 North, 176 Plaza Number 2091. This is the public hearing, is there anyone wishing to speak for or against this item? Is there anyone here for this public hearing?
One, two, a full second.
There, it's still the public hearing on this item. I need to close the public hearing and then what is the will of the board?
One, two, a full second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft...
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan...
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers...
Yes.
Commissioner Tusha...
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next public hearing and resolution, providing public approval for issuance by hospital authority number 2 of Douglas County, Nebraska. Number 2 of Douglas County, Nebraska, of not to exceed $17,500,000 aggregated principal amount of revenue bonds for the benefit of Emmanuel Retirement Communities. And with us here is Gregory Dietrich from QTAC Rock.
Thank you. Morning, Commissioners. Yeah, I'm Greg Dietrich with QTAC Rock in Omaha. What you have before you is a resolution by which you would approve, following a public hearing and for tax purposes, a issue of tax exempt bonds for the benefit of Emmanuel Retirement Communities, an amount of, as you said, up to $17.5 million. The bonds would actually be issued by Hospital Authority Number 2 of Douglas County, not by Douglas County itself. And the authority would loan the proceeds to Emmanuel Retirement Communities, who would then use the proceeds to expand its existing Pacific Springs Village facility. That's a senior living and assisted living facility at about 173rd and Pacific. As I said, QTAC Rock is bond counsel, and I'm happy to answer any questions you or anyone may have about the financing itself. And we also have with us Mr. Dan Friedland. He's the Executive Vice President and Chief Financial Officer of Emmanuel Retirement Communities, and he'd be happy to try to answer any questions you or others might have about the project specifically.
Commissioner Morgan has a question.
I was just gonna ask you, is that approved as far as zoning and the neighborhood, so on to build there?
Well, I think the answer is yes, and it's an expansion of an existing facility, so.
Do they need a zoning change, or is it all okay in the original flat?
I'll, I'll let Dan try to answer that.
Yeah, there should be no additional zoning requirements.
Could you state your name, please?
I'm Dan Friedland. I'm Executive VP at Emmanuel.
Thank you.
We should have no requirement for rezoning, because it was established several years back to be a retirement community. And the footprint now is just going to expand what we have in assisted living and provide additional independent living and patio homes. So we've gone through all the investigations of rezoning requirements, and don't believe there would be any requirement to do so.
How many more residents would that bring?
Oh, we're gonna have 24, about, we're gonna have 24 assisted living apartments, which we hope we fill. We have 14 independent, which could be anywhere from 14 to 18 people, depending upon double occupancy. And we're gonna have, we actually have built now six new patio homes, which are fully occupied at this point with couples. So it's just providing a, a combination of different activities and really providing additional service to our people that already live there. We currently have about over 100 apartments and patio homes out there already. And this is a middle and expansion, and it's completion of what was really planned about 16, 18 years ago, and it's just continuing that process to, to build out that community for seniors.
So it would go to roughly 150 residents, about a 35% increase?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kraft?
Is this property tax exempt?
No, it's not. It currently is not. We're independent living, so we're not tax exempt from an independent living perspective. So all of our current apartments and patio homes are taxed. As it goes into assisted living, that is tax exempt, so we don't have to pay real estate tax or sales tax on those properties, because it is healthcare related, and so therefore we're exempt.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
No other questions? Anyone else wishing to speak during this public hearing? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. What's the will of the board?
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan-
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Tusha, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you for being here this morning. Next, we'll move to committees, the first being the finance, the budget report. Commissioners Morgan or Duda, do you have anything to report?
I think, yes, submitted. However, we'll probably have an executive session today, I believe, and then we would go to Room 903, following that within a short time.
Yep.
Okay. Joe, is there anything you want to add? Thank you.
Okay. Next is the Child and Youth Services Committee. There's one item, discussion regarding the future of county's guardian ad litem contracts. Patrick, do you wanna?
Commissioners, you have contracts with two guardian ad litem vendors, Monahan Group and Tom and Contra's, Tom and Contra PC. The Monahan Group contract expires at the end of this month. There is language in the contract that says if either party intended not to renew it, they would have to notify the other party by March 1. There's also a 120-day out clause in the contract. The Encontro contract has similar language. That contract doesn't expire until June 30 of next year, 2015. So the question for the board is, does the county board desire to be presented with a renewed, a renewal of the Monahan contract by the end of this month, or does the board want to pursue another option?
Okay. Are there any questions or comments from anyone on this? Commissioner Duda?
Thank you. This has been a very enlightening process that we've, we've gone through to this point. I've learned a lot more about the guardian ad litem process, how it works, how we're structured. And I personally would like to see us maintain the status quo and, and renew the existing contracts. I know we've been looking at, could we do it better if we took it in-house? And I don't believe that we can. I don't think the answer to that is yes, and I see all kinds of problems and pitfalls with bringing it in-house. If there are opportunities to tweak these contracts and make improvements, this would be the appropriate time to do so. But I do not wish to just do away with them and bring them back in-house. I think the proliferation of people speaking to this board over the last year or so about juvenile cases is a, a floor bearer, bearer of what, what we could expect. And I think that's wrong. I think there should be a bright line between administration and the judiciary. And if we take this in-house, we're blurring that line. And it gets far muddier when one of our own says he wants that job. I'm very sorry that statement was ever made. I, that's just inappropriate. However, even apart from that, we're sitting up here discussing kids' cases. That's wrong. I did get a call from an attorney last week. She did not divulge the name of her client, but she said she has a client that we have talked about and have put out wrong information, but she doesn't want to correct it, because we're not supposed to be talking about it at all. This is all supposed to be confidential information. If we want to know if little Johnny Doe had a meeting with his guardian ad litem, and we learn about that, we then have to become part of the confidentiality that surrounds juvenile courts by law. I don't think we want to be having people who are disgruntled with the juvenile system with their own particular case, feeling like they can come and publicly air their gripes about their case, about their situation, and that we will somehow intervene with the judges and help them and make things right. I, I think this is a dangerous direction that we are heading, and it makes me very uncomfortable. I'm glad we've had the opportunity to learn more about the process, but the more I've learned about it, the more uncomfortable I am with us taking the role of, of heading this up ourselves. Thank you.
Commissioner Rogers?
I mean, to Commissioner Duda's point, I see where he's going, but I think that this item is separate from that in, in the respect that, you know, whether the board makes that decision is separate from that, is separate from here, in fact, that because of, you know, all the board knows is we've had this, the back and forth with the audit about the study that they did, the state audit about the program, and from the draft report, and the final one is not to be done. There's questioning that, again, separating this discussion about what's gonna happen. There's discussion about whether we should be in this business at all. And, you know, from looking at that, that auditor's report, you can't help but take a serious look at what's going on to some degree. And I think, taking into consideration all the points you made about that discussion about if we go separate or not, and I think that debate should be had and will play itself out. I think the, the situation with the contracts is something we have to look at separately, and not knowing if it's constitutional. And the fact, too, is that I think with this discussion at all, there's a discussion I think the board needs to have with the judges, because when we had the initial report with the meeting with Judge Johnson, Commissioner Borgeson and myself, he, I think Patrick was there, and Judge Johnson, I looked at each other like we've gotta kind of work through this thing to some degree. So I just wanted to note your, your, your point on whatever we do with the processes won, and I think we take that point. But I think it's separate in respects that we may not legally be able to be in this business, and if that's the case, I think that spurs a whole discussion, truthfully, with the legislature, to your point of separation of powers, because as long as, as long as we're having to pay, and you can't really get anything in accountability, that balance is not really good. I think if, if this thing is gonna go any further, to what you're saying of separation of powers, this needs to be in the process of the state's hands, so the Supreme Court can have some jurisdiction over to some degree, and we don't have to pay for it. So I say that just to kind of put it in perspective in some point. At least where I'm personally on this, after that report, I think we need to, at least for a minute, get out of the contracts. Let the court handle it and give us some time to play this out or do something legislatively, because there's, from that report, a whole lot of things that need to be done in regards to understanding. And I think there's these discretion, there's these, not discretionary, but these legal walls that's put up with information that doesn't match well with the board having to answer questions about how the money's spent. But you can't really dig into what's going on, and I think we need to have a serious look at that.
Thank you. Commissioner Rogers? Anyone else wishing to speak on this agenda item? Commissioner Tusha?
A couple of questions. Patrick, unless I missed it, how long are both of these contracts on for if we renew them?
Well, that would be up to the board. The Monahan contract, I believe, was three years, and the board could renew it for three years. They could renew it for one year, six months. It just depends on how, you know, what's negotiated with the Monahan group. I mean, there's two parties to the contract, so it's really up to the parties to decide what they want to agree to.
So if we wanted to keep this and just tweak it for a little while, we could just extend it for just even three months if we wanted to and bring it back, correct?
Could extend it for whatever length of time the parties want to agree to extend it for.
Okay. And then, you know, on the statement that Commissioner Rogers had made just a moment ago about, you know, possibly dropping it, and then let's look into it, what happens if we dropped it for a period of time, did some studies, decided we wanted it back? How would that work? Would we go back to the original? Would there be all new changes with figures and everything?
It would go court appointed.
Yeah, they would go court appointed then during that, that lapse of time?
And then new contracts, if we so desired, would be, they'd be RFP.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Kraft?
Yes. Patrick, in the auditor's report, there were criticisms about reporting from the guardian ad litem to the county, and there were a lot of items that we were asking that really were not relevant. And so we weren't really tracking and collecting the data. It was put in a file. We were criticized for that. Should we perhaps, and Ms. Monahan, you want, might want to reference this, should we perhaps alter the contract at this renegotiation and delete those unnecessary requirements that we're asking about for reporting?
Well, the, the guardian ad litem report from the state auditor is still in draft form. My understanding is that a revised draft will be issued at some point in the near future. So can't really comment too much on what the report says until it's actually put in the final form. However, to the extent that the auditor was not satisfied with the county's role in effectively auditing the contracts, then it would be wise to amend the contracts, if the county board wanted to continue the contracts, to amend those contracts to provide for more specifics as to how those would be audited within the bounds of, of the county's ability to do so.
Okay, thank you. And, and I agree a lot with what Commissioner Duda said, and I agree with what Commissioner Rogers said. They're not diametrically opposed. I, I'd be willing to, when this comes up again, support extending the contract at least until the Encontro contract comes up, so that they end on the same date or very close to that. We have been, yeah, I heard a couple of weeks ago that it was because pressure we put on the judicial. And the judicial is supposed to be insulated from pressure. And apparently some of us may have tried to pressure or talk to members of the judicial, which is inappropriate, you know? So I, I think the way we're doing it right now is sufficient. There are errors, there are faults in the system, but it's not because of the process we do. It is the process of the rest of the system. And the only way to change it is through the legislature. And, you know, we should be working smart, not dumb. And it's just been a very ugly process for the past three years. And that's one of the things I disagreed with Commissioner Duda. He said one year. I believe it's been three years. And there's a lot of misunderstanding on the part of the people involved in the system, or peripherally on the fringe of the system, and trying to involve themselves and insert themselves. So I, I'm satisfied with what we have. It's not perfect. It's, we, we're trying to balance the cost of the system and the taxpayers' concerns. If we go out and let the judges just appoint people, we have, we will have higher costs. And we, yeah, if we vote to have things that have higher costs, we have to be willing to support it with taxpayers' dollars. It's plain and simple. So thank you.
Commissioner Rogers?
Let me continue to build on what you were saying, Commissioner Kraft. I don't, I agree that judiciary is insulated from pressure, and I don't think it, you know, any time there was some conversation to put any on them. I mean, and at times when there was time for a conversation, at one point, they pushed back and, and put a line. So, you know, the whole thing is blurred from the, from a regular person's point of view, taxpayers' point of view, they may not understand it now. You know, I'm gonna say that, you know, I would, I would advise, and I, and let me say that I know what's at stake here. But after reading that report, there's no way, and kind of getting the feel with what the flow of it was, I don't think the best way to, is to do a status quo. I think we have to adhere to the terms of the contract and renew it for 120 days to give the options it needs to be there, and we need to get out of that business. It may cost a little more to some degree, but there's no way that we will ever have a, be able to have a relationship judiciary-wise where we pay and they make calls that is healthy. We need to get out of it. There'll be some costs. I think because you have the Encontro contract, we need to buy enough time and put a hard push on the legislature to take this, if that's what's so, or wherever it happens. Commissioner Duda's discussion, that'll happen and go. But I think in the context of what we're saying, just with where our realm is with the guardian ad litem contracts, I think the cost of trying to contain this leaves too much up in the air in regards to really understanding what was in that report. I mean, we've put some reporting those contracts about having them supply some information to us and even reading through it. It's like, it's, it's so strange to try to read through it. It's like being in an audit committee meeting for me. And I have to work so hard to do that. When I, when I walk out of it, it's, it's strange. It's a business that we shouldn't be in when we originally got into it, and I wasn't on yet, but I remember that debate. It was trying to contain some of the costs. The cost of containing cost is too high with this. And I think we need to get out of them to allow it to rectify itself, and, and because it is a judiciary. is a judiciary thing, and we need to, you know, there was a state report that wanted this given to the state. The state didn't wanna do it with the cost, because of the cost of it, but there's just no way, healthily wise, that if we're gonna pay for it, you can't get some answers. And as long as we're willing to pay for it, as long as we're gonna accept paying for it, you can't wholeheartedly justify a separation of powers. Because there's some answers that has to come in this end for paying it, and as long as that, that cover is there that doesn't let us get complete information, we can get complete information on everything else we pay for except that, and I think you just take, take everything out of it and let us get out that business.
Well set.
Commissioner Kraft?
Yeah, well set. Thank you.
Commissioner Duda?
I'm all for the state taking it over. I think that is appropriate, and I think that would be a great solution from our perspective. I also think it's unlikely that they're gonna do so, and we need to be ready for them not to do so. I mean, if they, you know, if they're willing to take it over, I think we're probably all on board and would support that, that switch. I certainly would. But, short of having that, I think it would be appropriate to put together a little working group, kind of an ad hoc committee, and include somebody from the state auditor's office, somebody from the county attorney's office, somebody from juvenile court, perhaps one or both of our contractors, to sit down and say what information is appropriate to be sharing publicly, and how can this be tracked within the existing framework of laws and regulations? 'Cause I think a lot of what the state auditor wants, we can't provide. I mean, that's just how the system works, and so to sit down with them and say what information is available, what should we be gleaning, what should we be after, that would be fine. Commissioner Rogers, you were quite right. This was done to contain costs when we put this in, in the first place. And I, I believe if we just let these contracts expire, we will be rudely reminded of why we put this system in, to contain costs, because I think they'll just go out of control again. So, I'd like to see us maintain these contracts, but go ahead and have these conversations about, you know, how can we do better tracking? What is the appropriate information for us to be having at our disposal and available to the public? Thank you.
Patrick, did we ever find out where we are with asking for the legal opinion as to whether or not we can even continue to provide this the way we're providing it, or legally bring it in-house if we so desire?
County attorney asked for a attorney general's opinion. That has not been received yet. We are on hold, waiting for that opinion.
Have we gotten a response back as to the, my understanding is both contracts are set up differently? And with one contractor, they're actually employees; the other contractor, they're not, and it's my understanding that in our own contract, we say this work cannot be subcontracted out. Did we ask whether or not that was indeed the case, and that if it were to be extended, something would have to change?
I have to defer to Maureen Monahan as far as what her relationship is. My understanding is, is when we, when we prepared and advertised the RFP about 10 years ago, we allowed for law firms, individual attorneys, or coalitions of attorneys to submit a proposal. My understanding is, and of course, Maureen asserts she can correct me, is that the Monahan group submitted a proposal as a coalition of attorneys. The contract was with the Monahan group, signed with Maureen and her father. Correct me if I'm wrong, Maureen, that attorneys come and go from time to time, in and out of the coalition. So, whether or not those constitute subcontracts, I would have to defer to the county attorney. I've asked the county attorney, they need more information from the Monahan group as to what specifically the relationship is between the attorneys.
That I think we need before the, or for the next discussion on this. And then, one of the other, on better tracking, one of the differences that for court-appointed versus our contractual arrangements, what's given as, I guess you would say, documentation for that bill to be paid is quite drastically different. And so, I think we would need to also take a look at that. And, which leads me to a question for the clerk's office. How are these bills, when they come to you guys, how or what are you looking at for documentation to pay them? Good morning.
Good morning.
Kathleen Hall, Chief Deputy County Clerk. We, the courts have their own computer system that they put the bills into, then they interface those into Oracle, and what we receive from the courts is a stack of orders signed by the judge with the docket and page number.
So...
That's what we receive.
So, you can't tell at that point what's different between our contracts and court-appointed?
No.
But, there is a difference in the billings as they come forward at times. Some are more detailed, some are not, or do you not?
Well, we don't see those. We just see the court order signed by the judge saying to pay an attorney a specific amount.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
That, again, may be something we need to take a look at, but I agree with Commissioner Rogers. We can't, and that's what this discussion is supposed to be all about, is we can't continue to, in my opinion, keep the status quo on a system that, in my opinion, is broken. I do appreciate the conversation I had with Mr. Incontro, and him sitting down with us, and Commissioner Tusha and I, and explaining his processes, that was very much helpful. And there's probably more accountabilities that if we worked with them that could be placed on contractual arrangements. But, we can also see that over the last three years, there's been a constant, not real far increasing, but a constant appointment outside of those contracts, and that's for a variety of reasons, which some we're not sure of, and some are because there's conflicts of interest within that case. So, and Commissioner Duda, as far as a committee, there is a committee that's looking at this, and I can tell you, and Maureen was at the meeting with me, there wasn't a real big, there wasn't big support for the state taking this over with those that were in the room, and some of that was because each county is different. You have, and Kim Havakati explained it very well, in the urban versus the rural, there's nobody in the rurals that are there, whereas we have an abundance here. But each system, each county does their work a little differently, and so how that would be resolved as a statewide entity, that was questioned, that was a concern, there was still, again, discussion as to whether or not that should be pursued. During that interim study I brought up, that whether or not guardian ad litem's by law needed to be attorneys. Maybe there needs to be a change in that, because what some of the work that they do, and they themselves even said that, because of the difference in the HHS now privatizing, that they're sometimes more social workers and case managers than they are actually doing attorney work. So, maybe there's a different approach. So, there's, again, there is a system problem, and in that system being a problem is, in my opinion, the problem of accountability. And so, how do we rectify that? And that's what I think we need to continue to discuss and work on. If you could check, Patrick, or have the county attorneys check on that legal opinion, I think that that needs, we need to have that prior to any final decision by the end of this month on that. So, if you could check on that for us, please?
If referring to the attorney general's opinion, I will check on that. Obviously, there's no guarantees that we will get anything from the attorney general by the end of this month.
I know. But I think you need to stress, or one of us can stress, that we would appreciate it prior to this decision being made. And then, I think it might be helpful if we get a comparable, get a report from what's submitted for a contractual guardian ad litem versus a non-contracted slash court-appointed, and see maybe if there's something we need to maybe discuss a little further in that I know the two contractual entities are here. If they, if anyone would like to speak on this item, feel free to come. Otherwise, we will have further discussion on it, and then by the end of the month, a action item on it. With that, we will move to community services. There is a reallocation of the 2013-14 Visitors Improvement Fund grant award to Kenecko, and this is just moving of dollars from one project to another, is my understanding.
Motion approved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Commissioner Duda?
Yes.
Commissioner Kraft?
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yes.
Commissioner Tusha?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Human Resources, there is a weekly personnel report from civil service as presented. Weekly CAO report on staff assault.
Nothing to report.
Legislative issues, there is none at this point, but again, we'll be keeping track of those that maybe have something and talk about it. One of these, I think, will be the GAL item, so we'll keep a tally of those. Marcos is doing that.
Madam Chair, can I add, just so, I guess since we're building on the record, we can list, I mean, we mentioned it last week, but I might forget it, so I'm gonna write it down. TIF, that's TIF has turned back, and I just wanna note that for a future deal.
Yeah.
And, you know, it was mentioned in the meeting, is, you know, it's unlikely that you would eliminate TIF, and I don't think you should, but, you know, in some conversations, I was told by somebody at the, at the state that, you know, there's a kind of reportion program with TIF that reimburses the schools back. And I had this told to me by a conversation with somebody that shouldn't know it. And I think, you know, most of all, particularly us, because our relationship with the state, I don't know if you give a hundred percent back, but I think that's worth a discussion, how the turnback taxes set up with the City of Omaha and the Century League Center, where they get it, and they turn a certain percent back, so they pay those bonds. I think it may be a model to look at in regards to getting a certain percentage turned back to us, to be able to offset some of the costs that we share with them. We may not be able to eliminate it, but I think it may be a good model.
Yeah, that's good, I guess. You got that one too much? Okay. We do have need for an executive session for litigation. That is it? That's it? So, is there a motion to go into executive session?
Go move.
So, second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Duda? Commissioner Kraft? Commissioner Morgan? Commissioner Rogers? Commissioner Tusha?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes, and again, following this executive session, we will be heading to room 903 for the finance committee meeting. for the Finance Committee meeting.
Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Tusha, Madam Chair. Motion passes.